Call the meeting to order, please stand for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, greetings everyone and welcome to our tonight's city council meeting. We will start out with a roll call vote, please Ashley.
Councilman McRae?
Roll call.
Yes.
Zolby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bellister?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay, we'll just start with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. This particular quote comes from Mr. Robin Sharmar. He is a Canadian writer and author. Change is the hardest at the beginning, messiest in the middle, and best at the end. And I would like to just throw in a statement here, and this is really for the benefit of the public at large. Going forward, I want to make it clear to the public, the first person to contact regarding day-to-day operations of the city is Becca. We all have full confidence in her abilities. We as members of the city council are also a resource for you. And of course, you're always welcome to attend the regular meetings. Okay, we have an invited guest tonight. We have the privilege of having Ms. Cheryl Coons from the SCIC, and she's here to give us a little presentation. If you want to just approach the mic and identify yourself. Um, we could maybe assess, I suppose.
I'm good, I'm good. So I bumped up my knee a little bit, that's why you see me limping about, but yes, I'm Cheryl Coon, and I am the executive director of the Stevens County Economic Improvement Commission. And as I see some new faces, I think that I'll do a little bit of education about what our organization does first. I'm going to break it down by number, so you see direct impacts of the work that we've done on workforce, loans, business retentions, that type of thing. And then after that, I'm going to get to the really interesting part for all of you. In 2014, the city of Morris turned over their economic development loans to the SCEIC, and we became your local development organization. And so we manage a book of loans on behalf of the city, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. I'll talk a little bit about the loans we have out right now and the loans that we still have to lend out. If you ever have questions about that, both the mayor and Becca sit on our board of directors, and they look at the financials every day. One thing, so that just leads me, not every day, but once a month, I look at them every day. However, one of the things I want to talk to you about is because we function much like a bank, we also have very strict confidentiality policies. So tonight, there are some businesses that you'll hear me mention, it's because I have permission to do that, but what you're going to get is some generalities, which is really frustrating, but I want you to please understand. For instance, Jeff, if you had a loan at a bank and your banker went out and told the city how much you owed the bank and that you had that loan, it would be a confidentiality breach. And so we just don't do that within our organization either, okay? All right.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. So the first, just for that general sort of overview, so for businesses, we fit into kind of three buckets for businesses, but our tagline is we do business with you. So at any stage of a business, whether you're a business startup, as an entrepreneur, you're in the middle of business and you're thinking to yourself, I don't know what's going on, I'm selling products, but I'm not making a profit at the end. We're going to take a look at your cash flow, and it's usually inventory, but there's usually something, there could be something else that goes on. We're going to help you to make sure that you remain viable at that as well. And then also, if you want to expand your business, or a really big thing is business succession. For those of you that have owned a business and you want to transfer that business to either another business owner or somebody in your family, it's kind of interesting when you learn that's about a five-year process to be able to do that properly. Lots of times when they come into my office, they're like, we want to sell it in six months, what can you help me with? And we go, whoa, I guess we'll shorthand it. We can do it, and we've done it before, but we like to get people in front of that a little bit sooner. We're also in that, kind of that, that technical coaching. So I get, this is so fun for me, the different people that come into my office every day, it's just crazy. Some people come in, they're like, I really want to be a business owner, I know I could be a great business owner, what does the community need? And I go, wow, this is cool, let's figure it out, you know, what does the community need, what are your passions? And so they look at my office and they're just, I have this great idea, I can't wait to get it started, I have no idea how to start a business, can you help me with it? And of course, absolutely, we can help you with that, because all of it helps our community, right, all the work that we do. And so that's from very startup, all the way through to, we're in, so we do, we do gap, I'm going to leave it there. We do gap financing. And in doing gap financing, that means there's usually a lead commercial bank in front of us that does financing. So let's just say that Zach wants to start a business, he needs financing from a commercial bank. Well, a commercial bank, if any of you have ever applied for a commercial loan, it's a lot of hoops, right? We help with those hoops. We help to do those business plans, we help to do those cash projections, whatever the bank is, and we kind of facilitate that project. And then we also do our own lending as well, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. One of the things you've probably seen around, well, this is, I'll talk about site selectors first. So this, because this came into play last year, I don't know if you guys remember this, but last year, the city was getting hammered pretty hard on Facebook about why aren't you doing anything to get an Aldi's in town, right? I don't know if you guys remember that, so I got a call from the city administrator and said, Cheryl, you know, can you work with this person and tell them, you know, how this works within our community? Because I do economic development, and that's economic development. So I called her and I just said, you know, here's what we do, and I'll tell you guys this as well. So a place like Aldi's, like Target, like Walmart, some of the large places, they have site selectors or real estate developers. And they're very specific when they're looking to expand their business. So Aldi's in particular, right? So I work with Aldi's, Aldi's needs a traffic count, so a certain number of cars need to drive by the location that they're going to develop in every single day in order for them to even look to build there, okay? That's one of the things that Aldi's has. The other thing that Aldi's has is they have to be within a certain mile, certain miles of an interstate. And they also, you also need to be on their distribution line, so it's a kind of economies of scale. If we're dropping produce off here, we need to drop it off here, drop it off here. Morris doesn't fit that bucket for Aldi's. However, they know we exist, and we do continue to work with them and other large corporations so that they know we're here. And that's a lot, that's some of the work we do, and that work, sometimes it comes that we seek them, other times the state will say, hey, we've got somebody, they saw, we keep an open sites on our website, so it's, it looks like real estate kind of, but we call it our, for site selectors to look at specifically from around the nation and the world. We keep our region updated, our sites updated, we have this site available, we have this site available. If you're looking to move into our region, you can take a look at those sites. And then sometimes they'll contact the state and the state will say, hey, we've got somebody interested in your region. Do you want to compete for their business? And that's when we get busy competing for the business, so we try to put our best foot forward. So we have community pages that represent each of the cities within the county, and county pages that have all of our data, like our workforce, our education, our schools, our properties, those types of things. And then we also fill out an RFP, and sometimes we're lucky and sometimes we're not, it's a difficult situation. We also keep, we try to keep the cities within our county and the county aware of regional, state, and federal supports within economic development. So different grants that might have an opportunity for development, workforce supports is really big this, right now. I've done a lot of workforce with our different manufacturers, especially in town, that are looking for a lot of people. And then also business retention and expansion. So just, it's just teeny snapshot of some of the work that we do, and the reason I love my job, because it's a lot of stuff, right? And it's something interesting, I never know, every day, it's something new and interesting that's coming in to our office, and so that's always really fun. Oh yeah, and then I get to also, this is, I'm not good at this, I mean, I was never good at it, but I do a lot of it, is I analyze a lot, I analyze and create a lot of economic development data. So if a business comes in, what's the economic impact? What's the financial impact directly on our community and on our citizens? What does that look like? And then those figures can be used for the developer to say, this is a really financially sound idea because of that, or can be used for planning and zoning. Is it really worth it to our community to look at changing any kind of planning and zoning? And I've done some of those presentations as well to help businesses grow and come into our area. Quick snapshot, okay, now we're going to get into the interesting stuff, so by the numbers. The work that we've done in our organization in the last year, so this is our last year of numbers, our direct work has impacted and retained thirty-nine jobs. Our direct work has created thirty-five new jobs, and we're currently looking at the creation of twenty-five more new jobs. When you begin to look at that economic impact, that's millions of dollars in impact when you can create and retain that many jobs in our communities. We have five new loans, as I said, we're gap lenders, so we manage a book of commercial loans. We have five new that we wrote this year, and we had two loans pay off this year, which is really nice, because when those loans, those dollars come into us, we get to lend them back out. So Brian decides he wants to start a new business, and Rebecca just paid off hers, and so we can give you the money and start a new business in town, which sounds great. So of those loans, we're currently managing twenty-six, and the SCEIC is a nonprofit. We've been in business over thirty years, and in that time, we have lent and relent over a hundred and fifty loans. One of the projects, and Kevin, it was, it's a fun project, I should just let you talk about it, but anyway. The Main Street Grants, so the federal government gave the state government dollars to help with development and redevelopment through COVID. We had the opportunity in our region to write a grant, and I spearheaded that grant and pushed really hard so that West Central Initiative in our nine-county region would put together a grant, and I wrote the Morris portion of it, and we received one point two million dollars for redevelopment on Atlantic Avenue going, and then going down Highway twenty-eight. We had to identify a corridor, and that's the identified corridor that we identified at the time. Once all of that went through and we rewarded the money, then Kevin was, we had a citizens committee get together. We put out an RFP, which is a request for proposals, and another means businesses, if you're interested in thirty percent of your development and redevelopment costs of a project that you have ready to go, fill out this application, we'll analyze it, and then our citizens committee put forward to West Central Initiative the businesses that they would like to have supported and fit within the bucket. So right now, we have nine businesses. I can't talk about it, it isn't super public yet, it will be public eventually, but of those businesses, if you look down Atlantic Avenue and twenty-eight and Highway twenty-eight, you'll see some businesses under construction right now. And that's a direct impact from the work from the SCEIC and of course, our citizens committee. Wasn't too terrible, was it?
No, it was actually really, it was a fun process, you know. Cheryl had done a lot of legwork, of course, before it ever got to us, and we got involved with it, but there was about two or three, I think, people that you had at the top of the list, and then we as a committee just decided that, you know, let's just open this up to some other people and see what, what kind of needs are out there, and boy, people came and they.
It's fun to see those projects too, isn't it?
It is fun when you got, when you have something like that, because you know, you don't know what the needs are out there until you have an opportunity like this, and we, it was just fun to see those things surface, you know, the different projects that people brought to us, so it was fun.
And one of the businesses, when they received their money, they said they were considering closing their doors. But because they received the money, they're staying in business, which is, I mean, that's a huge impact. Also wrote, and I also wrote and was awarded a hundred thousand dollars in another pile of relending money, so we have more money to lend for business retention and expansion and startups. Because you guys gave us your funds, and we have federal funds as well, I have a federal report that I fill out twice a year, and a state report that I fill out twice a year. I also have a federal site visit once a year and a state site visit once a year to ensure that we are properly managing the funds, as we are like a bank, right? We also have a federal audit that we go through, and then the board monitors the financials and approves the financials each month for the SCEIC, so we take it very seriously, the dollars that we have. And then I'm also, then we've also been really involved, I've been also, the organization has been very involved in the childcare pods with the county and doing that work with the county, and it's been a fun project. I actually, I was, I started in twenty sixteen, and my third day in the office, somebody walked in my office and said, Cheryl, we're starting some childcare meetings. We think you need to be involved. And honestly, I was so green at that time, I was like, what does childcare, childcare have to do with workforce? I didn't get it, right? How does it fit in economic development? Well, now we all know it's vital to economic development. And it's really, really encouraging what our city and county have done to support childcare. We talked a little bit about open spaces, we also have a business listserv. So when some of those, so when you have like the ERC, the tax credits for businesses right now, or like during COVID, during PPP loans, and all the things that businesses can get their hands on to stay in business and to help them out, we're pushing that out on our listserv. So if you're not on that listserv, I don't know, maybe I'll pass a piece of paper around or something, you should be. Because we do send out a lot of really incredible information, and we're monitoring all the time to get that sent out. Okay, now, now to you guys' stuff, okay? So like I said, in twenty fourteen, we became your local development organization. And the reason this happened in twenty fourteen is because the dollars are difficult to use through the state of Minnesota. There, it's a very thick book full of regulations, which I now know very well, but to get them lent out is not easy. But we've worked really, really hard to be able to get those funds lent out, and because of that, currently, we have six loans lent out, and that is six hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of loans that are lent out. And we currently have a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars left to lend out to businesses. We're getting pretty close to getting about a hundred and thirty-six of that lent out to a business that's looking right now for an expansion. The guidelines that we have when those dollars were given to the SCEIC is that it fits underneath the SCEIC policies, which fit all the state and federal regulations, and that the dollars are used within the city limits of Morris. During COVID, the county, the city council did approve that if we needed to use the funds across the county, we could do that. We did not need to do that because we also then sought and still have funds for COVID relief within the organization that we manage and run. So Cheryl, how do you know how to do all of this, right? I had no idea, I was guessing, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, so. As part of that reaching out to people, I am part of the Minnesota Association of, so MAPS, and Professional County Economic Developers. I'm on their executive team. I'm also a part of the State of Minnesota Economic Development Team, I'm on the Regional Economic Development Team, I'm on the Advisory Board for the Small Business Development Center. So we're really hard to make sure I'm connected at the state and the federal level, so that whatever comes out, I can help the cities and the county with whatever economic development needs they have. And I'm also a certified professional county economic developer, certified nonprofit resource development specialist, and I'm a certified nonprofit manager. As I said, the non, the SCEIC is a nonprofit. And what's really nice about that, and I did not set it up this way, but our forefathers thought about it. Because imagine if, Kevin, I haven't picked on you yet, or Cam, either one, were starting a business, and they had to come in open meeting laws and discuss their business idea and ask for funds. It's, it's so, it's nice because they can come to me, we do not have open meeting laws. So they can come to me, we can have private conversation about it, but yet, we still have representatives from the county, from each of the cities, and each of the banks in town. So it's a nice, it's a nice way for businesses to be able to move forward without having to say in a public meeting, hey, I've got this great idea, it's this, this, and this. It can stay quiet until it gets to the point where it's planning and zoning or something where the city or the county need to be involved. That's it, any questions?
Well, I could speak firsthand, from my experience when I bought Taco John's, I, I wouldn't have been able to purchase that restaurant unless it was for the help of the gap financing that SCEIC provided, so I guess I should thank you for that experience.
Maybe, right?
But no, it went really well, and you know, it's exciting stuff really, because that, when the state decided that, I can remember very clearly that, that time when we decided to transfer, there was, I was a little apprehensive about, it was our money, it was, you know, five hundred and some thousand, I think, at that time, I think, is what we transferred. You know, I was kind of like hanging on to it with my hands, like make sure you be good stewards with this, so. There was a little bit of apprehension, I think, at least as far as I was concerned, but it's just nice to see the progress that's been made over the last nine years, and the state was pretty, as it turns out, pretty forthright in, in making that decision to turn it over to a lending institution like yourself, because really, the cities were sitting on all this money and it was not being used, sitting there idle, so. It's, thank you for all the work you do, it's, I know it's much appreciated.
Just a question on that one point too, Main Street loans.
Yeah.
And the, the people that qualified for the loan payback, or is it a way?
It's a grant.
It's a grant, it, is it's there, it's?
It's thirty percent of their development costs. And of course, we had more asked than we had dollars for, and so not everybody received thirty percent. We had to do some, some cuts across the board, just because of someone, we wanted to help more people.
So we were able to spread it out more, instead of you're at the top of the list, you're going to get it, and sorry, you're down here at number twelve and good luck?
Yeah, well, the federal government did tie our hands a little bit. When they asked the state, you had to identify in your application businesses that you knew had extreme COVID loss. And those businesses were what they called priority businesses, and those businesses got to look at funding first in the first grant round, and we had five identified at that time. And then after that, then we opened it up to a second round.
Thank you.
Maybe speak to some of the qualifying uses of that grant and how, because I know there were some parameters that people had to kind of meet.
You're going to make me scratch my head and think that far back, do you remember them, Kevin?
Well, I remember some of them, but you know, you just couldn't use it to, you know, you had to use it for.
It had to be, they wanted a lot, so. The bill, when it was written at the federal level, it was written to support corridors that were burnt down because of rioting. Corridors that because of COVID just were completely blighted and businesses were boarded up and shut down. And as they thought about that, so that's what we had to identify, the COVID sort of hits to begin with. They thought, we should really open this up, because in the rural areas, we didn't have people torching businesses and those types of things. And so they, in their wisdom then at the state, said, you know, let's let the rural areas that didn't have that but did still have impact, allow them to be able to apply. So it had to go to, it couldn't go to operations or to pay off a building or to purchase a building, but it could go to develop and redevelop. So if you think about that as, you know, something that, that was maybe dilapidated or blighted, would be the word we would use, that they could improve that.
Is there a time limit, you qualify for the funds that you must maintain in the business, or is there, you get the funds and boom, it's a grant and you do whatever you want with it?
No.
Time wise?
Yeah, yeah, there, you do receive the funds, you have one year to put them to the use that has been stated. And they had to submit bids, so if you were going to fix your roof, put in new windows, put in a new sign for your business, you had to submit bids, and those dollars are paid then on invoice to the person so that we know that they're using them, and you have one year to use them up in your development timeframe. And the state government is pretty diligent in, in the documentation that you have to do in order to continue to receive those funds.
Do you need to maintain or be in that building or for the improvement, use the improvement for a number of years? Or if I decide six months after I've done something, gosh, and just boom?
That's fine.
I've qualified and you can do whatever you want?
Yeah, because it's improved the property.
Okay.
So the property is still improved, that's exactly right though, yep.
No, long overdue, this kind of thing is really long overdue in my view, and I think we all need to contact our legislatures. I'd like to see something like this happen every year. I think cities out here in greater Minnesota could really benefit from this kind of a boost every year.
I agree.
Not every decade or, so.
Yep, the end of October, I go to the Development Redevelopment Funds or workshop. And at that workshop, then we get our heads together and figure out a little bit of, of what we need in rural Minnesota.
Cheryl, I really appreciate you coming to talk about the overall, and then also explaining about the confidentiality, because I think sometimes we miss that, like, oh yeah, that makes sense when you said it, is that why you, because sometimes confidentiality is a secret, it's all a big secret, and it's not. It's just respecting those loans, those groups, the people, so.
Yeah.
That part, I really appreciate you just clarifying that.
Thank you, because it's the hardest part of my job, and anybody on the board too. I don't know if you guys think that, if you've been around long enough, but to know such good news, right? We do such good things and we can't even really talk about it. So thank you, I appreciate that.
And then is there anything that we can do as a city council that would, you know, is there anything we can do that would help or promote, or just tell people, hey, you got an idea, go talk to Cheryl?
Yes, that's huge, that is huge, because we don't have marketing dollars. We rely on our board members to let people know, and others that hear about us, to let people know that we're here. And we have, in the six years I've been here, we have grown exponentially in the number of people that we have helped. So it is getting out there, we're kind of getting to that point where it's a little bit of a push, like how can we handle this many? But what's really nice about that is when we are working with a number of businesses, I can usually handle five or six at a time. After that, then the Small Business Development Centers receive money from the Small Business Administration to do the same types of business technical coaching that I do, and so we work in conjunction together when we get past that point where it's, where I kind of feel like I'm losing my mind trying to keep on top of things.
And as far as any of our citizens have any questions for you, either contact City Hall, can put them in contact with you, or your office is down at the Dakota Bank Building?
Dakota Bank, yeah.
And there's somebody there pretty much Monday through Friday in your office?
Currently, no, currently, we're under some remodeling.
Okay.
But we do have, there's a sign up there with my cell number on it, and they can call me on my cell, yep.
But just to the general public to make them aware if they have questions or looking at doing stuff, to, to, any questions that they can contact and work with you also?
Yep, I'd appreciate that.
Super, or if they come in contact with any of us to, and I know I had a gentleman looking to do something with a business, and I got ahold of you, sat down and talked, and whatever happened, it's between you and them. You know, just to pass on the information to hopefully get another business in our town.
Yep, exactly, that's the purpose.
Super.
That and workforce, people, right? We need to make sure our community assets are strong, so that people want to live here, because that brings our workforce in, and that's kind of our flywheel. We're so lucky with the assets that we do have, our schools are excellent, our businesses that we have are excellent, so we just need to promote that a little bit more.
It was nice that you touched on the example of Aldi's coming to town, because I think there's a misconception in the public that we're not out soliciting businesses, and we're not doing everything that we can to get businesses to come to town. But there are businesses that are, are obviously looking at your stuff that you're putting out there. And there's certain restrictions that a lot of them have, and I would say that to what you mentioned about workforce, with the amount of jobs that are open in this town? If I was looking at that for a business coming in, I would be, we're a little insufficient for a workforce at this point in time. So I think we need to really do the things that you're talking about, and get our businesses, get our, get our housing, get our things where we can establish our workforce. And I think if you do that, that will bring businesses to town, because I think that's probably the number one priority for any business coming anywhere. So I do appreciate you doing that, because I think that's very clarifying to anybody that's maybe watching this tonight or asking those questions of us. I, I'm sure that other members of the council get asked this question repeatedly. I think that was very nice to be able to clarify that and put some context to that. So I hope if anybody has any questions, they come to you with them.
I have one commercial business right now, but they're just like, yeah, we know you're there, I've called them a lot.
Right.
Anything else?
Really appreciate the update, Cheryl, thanks for coming.
Thank you, anytime you want me here, just let me know, I'm going to limber my way out now.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, we shall back up one notch here and we'll take a look at the agenda. We'll need that motion to approve, and if anybody has anything they would like to add, now would be a good time, but otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I will move approval of the agenda as listed.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, same sign, carried. All right, we have no public hearings tonight. We'll move on to reading and approval of the meeting minutes from September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes.
I will move approval of the September twelfth regular meeting minutes.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the regular meeting minutes from nine, twelve, twenty-three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, same sign, carried. Now we have the condensed version of the same minutes from nine, twelve. Now we have the condensed version of the same minutes from nine twelve.
I will move approval of the condensed minutes from the September twelve meeting.
I have a motion in a second to approve the condensed version of the September twelfth minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carry. I will move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills. Park board minutes, library board minutes, revenue and expenditure report. And we have an exempt permit for the Stevens County Ducks Unlimited. Look for a motion to approve.
I will move approval of the consent agenda.
I will second.
Okay, motion in a second, do we have any discussion in any of the items on that consent agenda?
Uh, just because I haven't seen it before, line thirty-four for the Department of Transportation.
So that is um every time we get a transit operating grant. Um, they're usually a few years behind, but they'll audit the funds and then see if we were overpaid or underpaid.
Sure.
And so for that grant period, that's the month that we owe it back to them. So at year end, it was a due two in our books, which is a formality of a timing issue of when they finish the audit and they send us an invoice.
Anybody have anything else they would like to discuss on the consent agenda? Hearing none? Alright, uh, we had a motion in a second, so all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We have no petitions, requests or communications. So we will move on to ordinances and resolutions. First one being a resolution setting fees and charges and they should be listed in front of you.
So one we didn't talk about last night at the budget meeting um. That we may want to. Touch on, um, a lot of them are just updates, the park board updated, the campground fees, um, a couple others. The excavation fee and things, um, just costs are going up. Um, but the one we may wanna look at is the utility fees. Um, so it's proposed to change the reconnection fee. Um, to turn on for delinquent bills. So um this came up uh. As a. In the winter, it's it's time, it's uh two manpower to shut off, a lot of the same people. Um, are shut off um every other monthish. Um, so it was proposed to have instead of fifty dollars a time, do an incremental. Just kinda hoping to touch on it last night, but um we didn't get to it, but. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on that, um.
It looks like it goes up by fifty bucks each time then. To me, it seems reasonable, but.
Well, a two man team and the time to do it repetitively, I mean, if there's to help somebody out once, but like you say, if it's. It's continuous, it was sort of like when I first got on, every other month, it was the same ten or twelve that we were going to shut the water off and it. It's like the same thing, it's like you, you know your water bill is due every two months and we understand the hardship and if somebody has a hardship. To call City Hall and we can deal with somebody on a hardship that happens once in a occurrence, but when it's every. Every time, yeah, we need to figure out something, so I think it makes sense.
Um, I just uh looking at the camping fees there, I see we, you increased the the uh rate. For the sites with electrical hookup from twenty-five to thirty. I'm wondering if it would make sense to just, cause there were five bucks apart before, maybe uh. Bump up the twenty dollars to twenty-five for sites without electrical hookup, twenty-five bucks a night is still, I think, pretty cheap. And I I guess I would like to see that just bumped up to. Go from twenty to twenty-five bucks a night. Where I mean, where are you gonna stay for twenty-five bucks, you know?
Well, I think somebody had went around and checked some of the the neighboring. Areas and what the fees were when the the rates that were suggested or brought, you know, do you remember?
I wasn't at that.
Sorry, that was two ago, but just and the extra five bucks, I mean, it's cheap to have the services, the showers, the bathrooms. All the facilities that you have out there, it is cheap, I mean.
I know, I know I I have a season of tips and amounts and I know they're higher than that there, so granted, they have a, you know, they have a full time. Person there and, you know, they have some other things there, but you know, really twenty-five bucks is not, I don't think I'd lie at all, I don't think you're gonna. Like get any pushbacks or something like that.
Are you suggesting that we make that change and approve that with that?
I'm suggesting that too, I just wait for whether I, just to find out what the rest of the council probably feel and if some you wanna do, well, I probably have a motion on it, but. If you don't wanna, if you wanna leave the same two, that's fine, just uh, I just thought I'd throw it out there.
I don't have a problem with it.
I'll make that a motion then, uh, increasing the rate from twenty to twenty-five dollars for sites without electricity.
So are you changing the weekly rate to or no?
Pardon?
Are you changing the weekly rate to or no?
Um, I I suppose.
Just making sure.
The weekly rate is. Think you've already, yeah, I suppose, uh, that.
Yeah, be, change it to a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, I think that should go to a hundred and twenty-five too, I agree with Brian, I think that makes sense. Okay, with those two changes, we had a motion and I'll just need a second.
Is the. The um incremental charge for shut offs, is that already in there or do we have to add that? That's a change in the fee schedule.
So it's already there, okay.
That that's already indicated in there, right?
I lost track in here, so. Yeah, that's in there.
I guess I was, I was just making a comment that I was unaware that uh. We rent our equipment out to the public?
We don't to the public, but I think that's in there when we have, when we use it for some other stuff or somebody uses it to have a fee set, but.
Okay.
If, I think it was where it was years ago when we had that discussion, if how it got worded in there, but. No, it's not like Joe wants to come and rent the backhoe for the day, it's a hundred bucks, it's. It's back and forth on projects or what the value is to somebody.
Or even if we do something for a homeowner, like if we have to dig up like a curb stop, that's. Something that it's on their cost, we have a fee to to put for it.
Okay. Well, that's a bummer.
Yeah, I think Brian and I were both excited to start running backhoes.
Come get a mower. Test out that seventy-two inch. Alright.
Well, I guess I can second that motion, I think Brian already indicated it first on that, so I'll second it. I don't, maybe we'll just put that to a roll call vote on increasing those fees for the camping, Ashley.
Along with, along with accepting the other fees and just the the change, the change to the two.
It's the change to the whole fee schedule, cause there's.
Exactly.
Right.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay, next up is a resolution approving preliminary twenty twenty-three tax levy for collection. In twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, so if I can just say something to um after our our budget work session last night, so um. The levy did go up to that three point five percent increase that that we had discussed, um. Oh, uh, we did a couple of changes to the capital outlay fund. Um, and then I did hear from the librarian about the sign, so it was discussed about doing an um. Seeing a cost for an electronic sign at the library and and she stated that the library board has talked before about that and. Doesn't want an electric sign, so I just didn't know how to proceed with, you know, if we wanna still look at a cost for that or if we just wanna keep. Um, the capital outlay request. As they were.
Well, what kind of sign were they?
So it's just kind of fixing up the sign that's there.
Fixing up the sign that's there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was there a reason given why?
Um, they talked, she talked about how um they felt that aesthetically. Um, it, the sign that's there fit better with the building, um, they talked about the light pollution, um. They talked about, there was a couple other things she said, but those are the two that that come to mind. Um, were were some of their reasons. And we still have until December, but I just wanted to bring that up, that they. Were seemingly against that and maybe we need, you know, like we had talked about going and looking at all the different buildings, that might be something that we. We look at doing, but.
I remember when I had my restaurant, that was probably the one job everybody hated, having to go and update the sign outside. Cold and, you know, you had to get a ladder and go up and change the sign and. I don't know how much, how often do they change the sign out there, doesn't it really change?
I don't think it changes, I I believe the hours are set like with right now, since it's not really. Working, I don't know if it's electronic anyway, but it's just.
Yeah, it's, it was carved in there, so and so they've changed their hours, so now that's what it is.
Yeah, it's taped on.
So I would imagine that's all that's gonna be done is maybe. I suppose you sand it down and then. Do we know what's gonna be done with it?
Um, she just gave me a cost, I can double check on what what's all gonna be done with the sign.
You know, they had an electronic sign, they would, you know, they could probably promote different things and activities that are going on, I think, a little easier too, so people know. I mean, I think we know, we have a pretty good idea what goes on at the library, cause we get, you know, reports and such, but it'd be nice if. They had something like that where people, somebody driving by, there, maybe there's an activity going on that they didn't know about.
So would you still like me to give a cost for?
I guess I I think so, I mean, I don't, if they're absolutely dead set against it, but you know, maybe we just have to sell it. You know?
Maybe electronic one is way out of cost too, I mean, that that would, that would kind of be, put that to rest.
Yeah, ballpark, that's something we can discuss before we get to our final and if. Mayor or one of us gets a chance to go over and visit and just, you know, our opinion of, you got different things going on. Different events to be able to highlight it with a a message board that you can adjust out every month or. Different times of the year when you have things going on, but our thoughts on it and hers and see where we get for a happy medium.
Well, and I don't know if you've ever heard it, but I I do, I have heard it from people in the community, you know, like, well, why do we even have a library? You can go online and buy books all the time, you know, and blah, 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 I think it's just a lot of money we're spending for, you know. So I think it would really help with, you know, community engagement and just awareness of what actually is going on there. Okay. Any other discussion on the uh? Levy, we kinda hammered it pretty thoroughly last night, of course.
I think you're you're right, so I'll move approval of the resolution. Uh, adopting the preliminary twenty twenty-three tax levy for collection in twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second to approve that resolution, approving the. Preliminary twenty twenty-three levy for collection in twenty twenty-four. And once again, we'll have a roll call vote on that, Ashley.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Alright, moving on, resolution uh adopting the preliminary twenty twenty-four budget for the city of Morse. Kind of just an expanded version of what we just talked about.
Yep, yep. It was the same thing we kinda discussed last night with just that increase in the three percent or three and a half percent over the three.
I'll go ahead, don't need to repeat everything, res- uh. On that resolution adopting the preliminary twenty twenty-four budget for the city of Morse.
I will second.
First and a second on that resolution, we will have once again another roll call vote on that, please, Ashley.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Alright, last up, resolution approving a library heating slash cooling system, three year maintenance contract with Johnson Controls. I think this is just a normal, a three year contract, we've been using them really for quite some time and. I think they do a pretty good job for us.
I will move approval of a resolution for a library heating cooling system, three year maintenance contract with Johnson Controls as listed.
I'll second.
Alright, first and a second on that resolution. Uh, and we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay, we have a city manager's newsletter.
Yeah, so we had our budget work session last night, our next work session will be um October the thirtieth, so that Monday at five fifteen. Um, our Seven Street Progress, um, at the last work session we talked about, or in in the last council meeting, we looked at a survey. So that'll go out um here, um, hopefully next week, um, getting addresses and list property owners to be sent out to. Um, union negotiations started today for one of the unions, um, so those will be in process now. Um, the park board met on the thirteenth, um, the diamond doctor put in new clay down at both Wells Park and Eagles Park on the softball fields. Um, a new sign for the campground with the correct pricing will be um put up after um tonight with the new fees. Um, at the park board, they talked, the priority um is the bike trails. Um, so kinda next steps are to look at what kind of funding we can get and what kind of grants are out there for some trails. Um, and see what we can do with those. So you all got um an email from Griffin on sustainability strategic planning. Um, so looking to to have kinda next steps. Um, in updating the plan for the Morse model, so that'll start um November eighth, so it's three to seven. I'm sure if you've responded that you can go, um, more information will be coming out about that. Um, talking the brew pub and the planning, so the planning commission uh didn't meet this last month, uh. The ordinance hadn't been done, so um hopefully this next month we'll go, uh, we'll have the zoning ordinance. For brew pubs, um, so the planning commission can look it over and. At the draft and kinda go on from there. Uh, we have the airport farm lease that'll come um towards the end of the year for the council, uh, looking at um. Keeping it with with who is renting the the land now, um, with a little increase and then um possibly looking to go out for bids next year. Going on to the transit garage, so we had our second round of bids come in high, um, so a new drawing has been completed. Um, in talking with um the engineer. It's best to wait until between November and January to to go out for bids for that, just cause contractors are a little slower, they're. Finally finished up with their um spring, summer, fall projects and we'll have the time to to look at bidding, so we're hoping. To have bids come in better. Um, with this next round, um, taking taking out a couple more more items, um. So we'll see how that goes, we'll um sometime end of October, November, you'll see a a resolution. Um, soliciting bids again for that. Uh, Prairie Harvest Fest was this last weekend, uh fireworks were postponed and then canceled due to the weather. So um they're looking at actually, since we've. Basically, we would have had to pay um quite a bit of our contract anyway. quite a bit of our contract anyway, to do fireworks. Um, anyway, so we're, uh, the Prairie Harvest Fest committee talked about a couple different options, um, either Friday after the homecoming game, or, um, later on in November with the holiday lights.
Prairie Lights.
But, uh, they did talk to the school and talk to, um, the company doing the fireworks, and so I think as long as the fire chief signs off, that it'll be a Friday event after the homecoming game. So, um, those won't go to waste. Um, our insurance renewal came in at a nine point one, uh, kind of talked about that last night with the budget. Um, we're still gonna be looking at different rates, uh, with, um, the COA, Blue Cross, and Medica, and I think there's one more. Um, just to kind of see what kind of ballpark we can get with those, and if we're actually getting the best rate with, with peep. And then the only other thing I have that's not on here, um, the mayor of Granite Falls, Dave, I'm gonna say his last name wrong, Smidzinsk, Smidusla, see, I'm really bad, cause it's Smig. But, um, he passed away in, um, Washington DC this last weekend. Um, he was a big proponent for, with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota, working with the state for, um, all us rural communities out here. He was a big vocal, um, person for our general area, and he will be very missed for southwest Minnesota, so.
That's to grab.
Yeah, he was out there trying to get money for rural transportation in Minnesota, so.
Opportunity for another mayor, I suppose, to want to step up, huh?
Right. Yes.
Any questions on the city manager's newsletter?
Just if you will, make sure, double check with Russ Jeremiah, they were gonna redo or make new signs for the park, that we get that adjusted rate, what you're talking about with, uh, non-electric, so if they go off of our schedule, or if what we'd approved or looked at, you know, at our, uh, park board meeting, just so we get a brand-new one done and it's accurate, there was confusion with campers coming in now that the rates and some of the boards didn't line up or jive, so they're, they're gonna get that done this winter to make new ones, so, so we have an accurate one, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, any other questions for the, from the city manager's newsletter? Hearing none, we will move on to board updates, uh, would anybody like to start us off? Boards, uh, that you're sitting on, got any news?
Thank you for putting our park board minutes in, uh, Torgy does a good job, so everyone can see what's discussed with the park board, so, if anyone has any questions on any of that, but it pretty much covers everything, he does a good job.
I had an update, uh, actually from the chamber board, or a request, if you will, I briefly mentioned it to Becca. The chamber board, of course, as you know, they sponsor the parade of lights that'll be coming up here in second week in November. And the lineup, of course, I think we talked about it a little bit too in our work session, but, they have the lineup that goes along that street up to the Senex North Station, they were requesting that we take a look at putting streetlights in there, because as the parade, you know, floats line up, there's always a lot of kid activity, and I guess there's a safety concern if somebody might get, you know, get hit. So we have currently no lights along that street, and that's something we maybe want to take a look at. I think you received that information from Neil on that company Power Stack, I don't know if you got a chance to look at that, but, I thought it was pretty interesting, uh, Neil Schmigall had sent some information to me about a company that he ran across, it's called Power Stack LLC, it's a solar energy company, they're based out of Hayes County, Texas, but they make stack, stackable light solar poles that you can put up. I have really no idea what the costs are and so forth, but, you know, with our position on sustainability and solar, I don't really know what the costs are, but it might be worth taking a look at, we could see if that would be, it might be a good test site for us to see if there's some application there.
How do, how do you determine where streetlights go? I mean, who does that, is that a, I don't even know. I'm just, cause there's a lot, I mean, I, now that it's darker, I walk and it's, it's, there's a lot of streets that are no lighting.
And maybe with the stackable thing, if we could find an application, it may be, you know, situation that would work for something like that, if we're a little weak in, in an area.
I mean, is that a, like, is that a, somebody go around and check, or, I mean, how does that even work?
I don't know, I can, I can check.
Cause yeah, I think there, we have quite a few streets that are really, really dark.
I'll check.
Or a survey of our existing lights that are burnt out, I mean, I've, I've had some citizens too complain about it being so dark around, and I know there's been a couple up in my neighborhood when I, in the fall, when I'm running a late-night shift and come back home, that the ones that are, are out, and I guess that, just, and if somebody needs to go around and write, hey, the one at East Seventh and Colorado is not working, or, you know, our public works staff wasn't aware of some of the main street lights that weren't working at late night, so.
Cause they might not be out at night, I mean.
Yeah, if you're busy, you're here early in the morning and you don't pay attention, but just, yeah, forest just to get an inventory of.
I think a lot of the ones that aren't city-owned street, like, lights, cause I think Main Street we have some, but the rest might be owned by Otter Tail, but they would probably have an inventory of, of the lights, but I can check. I can check how, how we decide where they are and, um, if there's an inventory.
I mean, that, not, like, you have to do it too, but it's interesting.
It's probably more accurate that most of the lights in town, other than the ones on the main street are, are functions apart for Otter Tail.
But we're still paying for them also.
That'd be interesting, no?
Yeah, yeah, we're paying for the streetlights that are on the boulevards, it's.
Yeah, we're paying for the lights to be on.
But if they're not working, you have to make them aware of that. Or I know some of the people complained on the annexed in area out here on East Seventh Street, and I think we put a few more in, some of the cul-de-sacs in some of those areas shortly after they were annexed in.
Yep.
Yeah, good thing we check in on it and try and be a good night project for a couple of us to go road tripping.
I just, I could give you a quick update, uh, unless somebody else has something, but, uh, last Thursday, uh, Blaine and I and Griffin and Troy Goodnow, uh, had a Zoom meeting with a, a gal out in Harrison City, Pennsylvania. It was a Zoom meeting that, how this really happened, it's kind of interesting. Blaine and I did the NPR interview, as mayor, some of you may or may not know. How, little did we know how far-reaching that interview would have been, I, I think it was about a, shoot, a week after we did the interview or two, when that actually was posted. I get an email amongst all the other emails I get in my iPad, and I see this Laura Vincetti, she's, represents Project PT. They're a nonprofit company, it turns out, they've been in business and, so, an organization since twenty-fourteen. And she was reaching out because she heard our interview, and she wanted to see if, cause they struggle out there in their, with their particular progress that they've made since twenty-fourteen, because where they're located in southwest Pennsylvania, they're in the middle of fracking company. And there's just not a lot of, they, they get a lot of pushback on all of their efforts that they've tried, they just can't get anything done. And so she was just looking if we had any kind of ideas on how we could sort of help push this thing along for her, and it was really a fun, uh, fun Zoom meeting, uh, former manager, city manager Blaine was in on it also, and, um, there was just really a lot of good com- uh, communication that went on, a lot of good ideas presented, and she thanked us, uh, profusely for the time we spent, and, and, you know, Troy was very, you know, helpful as well, and it really, everybody, I think, had some input to, we just gained a new friend out of that, you know, and who would've guessed, you know, an interview like that, that you'd, you know, get a call from somebody out in Pennsylvania, just, it really kind of shocked me, I was just like, wow. So we can all be proud of that, cause we've all been part of that sustainability progress we've made as a community, and people are noticing it, and she just, she really couldn't believe all the things that Morris has been able to accomplish, so, kudos to really everybody sitting in this table, cause we've all been part of that, so. But that's really all I had on my boards. Anything else anybody would like to add, no? Hearing none, any other business to come before the council? Hearing none?